Yeah, we'll start it over. We're on. I want to welcome y'all to the Hunt County Commissioners' Court regular session. This is December the 13th, 2022. At this point of time, I would ask Commissioner Straight if he will say the prayer, and also then we'll say the prayers allegiance to the flag.
Definitely, Father, I want to open up by saying thank you for your unconditional love that you show us every day. Give us knowledge and wisdom to take care of the people's needs in Hunt County. Please watch over each and every one of us throughout the day. Forgive us of our sins, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Out of the Texas flag, present allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I call this meeting to order. I have Commissioner Mark Hutchins, Randy Straight, Steve Harrison, Commissioner Steve Harrison. Judge Bobbitt had other things that he needed to be at, so he is not here. My name is Philip Martin. I'm a Commissioner of Precinct 3, and I'm Judge Pro Tem. Before you have the minutes of November the 22nd regular session, do I have a motion and a second to recede these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. December the 8th, we have the minutes, 2022 special session. Do I have a motion and a second reference to that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a correction. I have, the motion is passing. Public testimony. Citizens are invited to address the Commissioners' Court on topics not already scheduled for a public hearing.
Hey, Philip, we need to go back and take a vote on the special session minute.
Oh, I apologize. I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Citizens are invited to address the Commissioners' Court on topics not already scheduled for a public testimony. They may be made by email in publiccomments@huntcounty.net. The public will be permitted to offer public comment telephones provided by the agenda as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the telegraphic video meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Upon written request, speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in civil matter. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other court. Do I have any public testimony at this time?
Do you have any emails?
Good enough. Does anybody wish to speak? We'll continue on. We have our old business action items. There are none. New business, we have the consent items or consent calendar. Have y'all looked over the consent calendar? There's any one that you desire to pull out? If you will, ask now and we'll discuss it. Do I have a motion and a second in reference to consent calendar?
So moved.
I have, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. We'll go down to action items of approval of county, counts payable. I will make a motion to pay the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion passes. Now, those, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Approval of line item transfers. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Approval of payroll and personnel. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. We're going to item number one. Reference this as the approval, agenda number one. The approval of 4,000 assignments to pay for CID and Hunt County Sheriff's Department, Terry Jones County Sheriff. That'll be a total of $8,000. Do I have a motion to reference this and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? The motion passes. At this time, we'll skip the Treasurer's Monthly Report. Brittany Turner is not here at this time. She has to get me to discuss later. Agenda number three. The 2022 Statement of Financial Position for the Hunt County Community Supervision Correction Department, Jim McKenzie, Director of Hunt County CSCD. Do I have a motion to accept this statement?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number four. An annual local agreement between Town of Poetry and Hunt County for road maintenance enhancement and repairs, tree trimming, mowing, and right-of-way clearing and other road-related work, each referred to as a road project. This is Commissioner Randy Straight. Do you have any statements in reference to this, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion to agree on this?
I make a motion to pass this annual local agreement with Poetry.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. I'm going to, I skipped over, Brittany's here. Ms. Turner's here at this time. I skipped over hers. We'll go back to her line item. It's the Treasurer's Monthly Report for September the 2022 and October 22. Brittany Turner, Treasurer.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, gentlemen. If you'll see in your package, you have both September and October for the monthly Treasurer's reports. They kind of domino at this time of year because it takes a little longer to close out the fiscal year end for '22. So you've got two months at a time. Everything has been balanced back. The bank statements have been balanced. The general ledger reconciles to the bank statement. Our books and the auditor's books agree on both months for the month-end balances that we have there. You'll notice a difference in September. We did add our investment for the self-insurance fund. We have a deposit that is sitting out there for our stop-loss group that is in our Texas Class Investment Fund. You'll notice that on your invested funds for September, and it will carry into October as well. And then you will see that we are now, in October, we'll start seeing that money flow through our books for our self-insurance there as we started getting money in and paying claims out. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Y'all been pretty busy in reference to all that, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept and a second? The Treasurer's Monthly Report.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. In reference to number five, it's consider an approval of Boz home ISD contract with Hunt County Sheriff, Office for School Resource Office. You want to put it off for executive session?
Yes.
We'll skip number five and also six. We'll put that after we talk about it in executive session. We're going to agenda seven. Consider an approving order of Commissioners' Court finding that the ongoing construction of a new fence along Hunt County Road 3605 along property owned by the County Road 3605 Trust, 11.1918. May I let you speak in reference to this?
Yeah, that one, in the next two, actually, I also need to go after.
Good enough. We'll put that on executive session also, number seven.
And number eight as well, you said, Daniel?
Yes, and nine.
Eight and nine, okay.
You want executive session on those also?
Yes, sir.
Eight and nine? We're going to item number 10. The upgrade of approximately 1,900 foot of County Road 1058 from Dirk to Rock in Precinct 1 money is an escrow. Do you have any statements you want to make?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve this upgrade.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 11. Correcting agenda from 17606, number 29, from Commissioners' Court on July the 26th, 2022, to reflect the correct county road. The correction should show County Road 2266 in Precinct 2. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Correct, number 12. Correcting agenda 17606, number 51, from Commissioners' Court on July the 26th, 2022, to reflect the correct county road. The correction should show County Road 2621 in Precinct 2. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Number 13. Rescission of approval of constructing placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachments to existing poles, County Road 2739 in Precinct 1. Frontier communications are none of the normal stipulation originally approved on August the 9th, 2022. Attachment number 17638. Do I have a motion and second reference to this?
Make a motion. So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Number 14. Rescission of approval of Boz 3307 of 1-1.25 DUC, 5, 17 by 30 hand hose, 9, 2 by 3 hand hose, and 1 11 by 11 16 drop box. This request is Long County Road 2288 in Precinct 2. Under normal stipulations originally approved on June the 14th, 2022. Attachment number 17515, Randy Straight, Commissioner. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, so moved.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 15. Rescission of approval to conduct the equal power distribution facility around across County Road 2415 in Precinct 2 Farmers Electric Cooperative. Under normal stipulation originally approved on May the 24th, 2022. Attachment number 17490. Randy Straight, Precinct 2, Commissioner.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a motion. I do have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Rescission of approval to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachments to existing poles, County Road 2504 in Precinct 2. Frontier communications are the normal stipulations originally approved on July the 12th, 2022. Attachments number 17578, Precinct 2, Randy Straight. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Let's see, that was number 16, Rodney. Okay. Rescission of approval of this number 17 approved to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 3129 in Precinct 3. Spectrum Charter under normal stipulation originally approved on January 11th, 2021. Attachment number 17215. I do make a motion of rescension. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 18. Rescission of approval to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachment to existing poles on County Road 3134 in Precinct 3. Spectrum Charter under normal stipulations originally approved on January the 11th, 2021. Attachment 17215. I do make a motion in reference to this rescission. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Rescission, item number 19, of approval to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachment to existing poles on Herling in Precinct 3. Spectrum Charter under normal stipulations originally approved on December the 14th, 2021. Attachment number 17157. I do make a motion that we rescind this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 20. Rescission of approval to construct and placement of fiber which may consist of both underground or aerial attachments to existing poles, County Road 3126 in Precinct 3. Spectrum Charter under normal stipulations originally approved on December the 14th, 2021. Attachment number 17157. I do make a motion that we rescind this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 21. Rescission of approval to construct and placement of a fiber which may consist of both underground and/or aerial attachment to existing poles, County Road 3716 in Precinct 3. Spectrum Charter under normal stipulation originally approved on May 10th, 2022. Attachment number 17440. I do make a motion that we rescind this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 22. Rescission of approval to Boz place 3,085 foot of 1.1.25 DUC, place 1 2 by 3 HH height, 9 17 by 30 HH, and 7 11 by 11 by 16 drop box. This request is for road crossing on Brookfield Drive, Precinct 3. Frontier communication under normal stipulations originally approved on July the 26th, 2022. Attachment is number 17606. I do make a motion that we rescind this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 23. Rescission of approval to place 1 2 by 3 HH 2, 17 by 30 HH 1, 11 by 11 by 16 drop box, and Boz 689 feet to 689 feet of 1-1.25 DUC. This request is for roads crossing on Hillside Circle in Precinct 3. Frontier communications are under normal stipulations originally approved May the 10th, 2022. Attachment number 17440. I make a motion, we rescind this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. At this point of time, item number 24. The replat of Lot 21 in the Whispering Oaks addition to be known as 21A and 21B in Precinct 2. Basically, we're going to open up a public hearing in reference to this. We'll have a public hearing on this before we take any action in reference to it. So at this point of time, the public hearing is going on. Do we have anybody that desires to talk about this?
There's nobody online.
Nobody online? Good enough. I will close that public hearing. Item number 24. I'll repeat it again. The replat of Lot 21 in the Whispering Oaks addition to be known as 21A, 21B in Precinct 2. Do I have a motion and a second?
Brian, do you have any comments on that for us?
Oh, I apologize. Would you talk to us about this? I apologize, Brian.
It's a, it's a basic replat. Nothing special about it. I have not received any, any comments from anybody after the, the public notice, so.
Do y'all have any questions in reference to this?
I make a motion to approve this replat on Lot 21 Whispering Oaks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. At this time, on item number 25, I would like to open a public hearing in reference to this. I'll read it first. The replat of Lot 25 and 26 of Stone Creek, Phase 2 in Precinct 2. Kelly Miller. This is a public hearing. Would you like to go on and talk to us about that, or you would like to wait? Brian?
Either or. These people are adjusting the property line. Right now, they've got a pond that splits the property line. So they're sliding the property line over so the ponds all on one property. Received a call about it. One call explained to the people what was going on, and they were comfortable with it and evidently didn't show up this morning, so.
Is there anybody online that desires to talk about it?
There's nobody online.
Okay, I'll close that meeting and I'll rephrase it. Now, I apologize. I'm used to talking so fast this morning, and I didn't look up and see you. I apologize. Number 25. The public hearing is closed. We will take action. The replat of Lot 25 and 26 of Stone Creek, Phase 2, and Precinct 2. Kelly Miller. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the replat on Lots 25 and 26 of Stone Creek.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. I'm going to open up public hearing in reference to item number 26, and the item would be the replat of Cattle Creek Estates to be known as McCleskey Addition in Precinct 3. Brian, would you talk to us about this? And this meeting is open.
This is a, this is kind of an odd deal. They are replating this lot, but this is actually only the preliminary plat for this thing. They're wanting approval to replat it, and they are going to have to build a road. There's going to be some construction involved. So this is, you know, this is the first time we've seen this one, but it'll come back as a, a final for the McCleskey Addition once construction's finished and everything's been done, so.
Is there any other comment? If I may, I'll close this public hearing in reference to it. Number 26, I will reread. The replat of Cattle, Ms. Craig, to be known as McCleskey Addition in Precinct 3. I do make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion has passed. And we're going to item number 27. We're going to open up a public hearing again, and this has to do with the preliminary plat. Pardon me.
We don't need a public hearing on this one.
Okay, I have that we do.
Those first three.
Okay, good enough. We will not have a public hearing. The preliminary plat of Legacy Estates in Precinct 2. Would you talk to us about it, Brian?
This is a preliminary plat. They're proposing to build a road to access these lots, so we'll have some plans come back through later and a final plat after, after we get some, some review done on the engineering plans, once we get the civs. They're wanting approval before they spend a bunch of money on engineering, so.
Good enough. Do I have a motion in reference to this and also a second on the preliminary?
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat on Legacy Estates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 28. The preliminary plat for Oakley Estates in Precinct 3. Brian?
Same, same deal. They're, this is going to be a pretty good-sized subdivision. They're going to have to build a road. So we'll have some civil plans and a final plat later on once they, once they get further into the engineering on it.
I'll make a motion that we accept this preliminary plat. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number 29. The final plat of Motivation Vision in Precinct 2. Brian, would you talk to us about that and why they came up with this Motivation Vision?
Motivated Vision is the gentleman's company name. So he, he actually lives on the property and is selling a tract to develop, and he's retaining the other part of it, so.
The final plat of Motivated Vision in Precinct 2. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve this final plat of Motivated Vision.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. We're on item number 30. The final plat for Boz Estates, Phase 2 in Precinct 4. Brian, would you talk to us in reference to this, please?
This one is going to require a road upgrade for the county road that's on the north side of it. He has not paid the escrow to upgrade that road yet. Before he, before he spends a chunk on it, I think he'd like to have some sort of a conditional approval. So I would recommend a conditional approval on this one pending him, him paying that escrow.
Steve, do you, do you have any comments on this?
No, I was just going to make the motion to approve the final plat pending the upgrade escrow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. This is number 31. The final plat of Wallace, number 1 in Precinct 4. Fighting Association Land Survey. Would you talk to us about it, please?
Pretty basic two-lot plat. They're selling the larger lot that has the house on it, and they're retaining the, the smaller lot. Roads are good quality, ready to go out here. Rideaways look good. It's a, it's a basic one. I'd like to have about 14 of these a week instead of weird stuff.
I make a motion to approve the plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. I'll tell you what, I'd like to say something right fast before we go into executive session. Commissioner Straight, happy birthday.
Thank you.
You know, this is the first time I've been on this court, pretty long time. First time that we've ever had a birthday, actually, of one of the commissioners[1777.18] time that we've ever had a birthday, actually, of one of the commissioners in reference, much less a judge, in reference during court day. But I want to say something else. This is also, from my understanding, your last day in court, because you'll be leaving office. And I want to tell you this, it's been my pleasure, and the work that you've done for the people, it's been my pleasure to know you and work with you, and I, I know that the same sentiments are with everybody in this room. But I would like to thank you for the service of the people that you have done.
Thank you very much.
I do thank you. Is there any other comment?
Happy birthday, Mr. Straight.
Thirty-nine years old, is that right? Thirty-nine. I'll tell you what, at this time, we need to adjourn in the executive session under, what, 1 through 4?
1 through 4.
1 through 4. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Item 1, 1 through 4.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes, we are going into executive session.
Y'all advise me when we're up, please.
Not yet. We're still not up?
Is it up?
No.
We're up.
Oh, we are? Okay. My phone lags a little bit sometimes.
Well, yep. Good enough. Tell you what, we're back in live session. I'd like to talk on item number five, the Consider Approval Boe Home ISD with Hunt County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officer. Involved in this contract, we have a resolution. The resolution of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court of Hunt County, Texas, approving an inter-local cooperation agreement between Hunt County, Texas and Boe's Independent School District for the provision of the school resource officer assigned from the Hunt County Sheriff's Office. It'll be effective January the 4th. And I do make a motion, pardon?
Of 2023.
Of 2023. I do make a motion that we accept that resolution.
Well, just, it's not effective that day. It's effective in September. What you're talking about is the scope of the agreement has a start date, and that's going to be...
Okay, the starting of the agreement, January the 4th, 2023.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but I need to make a motion on that right there, correct?
Yes, you can, you can just, that can be...
That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Now, Consider Approval Boe's Home ISD Contract with Hunt County Sheriff for School Resource Officer. This is a motion that it begins January the 4th, 2023. Do I have a second?
And just to be clear on this motion, you're talking about the start date for the officers, not the effective date of the contract, being January 4th.
Okay, this will begin when...
Well, the contract will retroactively begin on September 1st, the way that it's written, of 2022. The date that you're amending in your motion is the earliest start date of the SRO officer.
Now, that'll be January the 20, on January the 4th.
Yes, sir.
That's a motion.
He said for Boe's, I thought we just did Boe's. Don't we have to do Campbell?
Yeah. You should be on number six.
Yeah, we're on number six. We're doing Campbell.
Yeah, so that's your motion, Phillip, is that all of that applies but to Campbell ISD.
Yes.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and second it, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. Item number seven, I will drop that from the agenda. Item number eight, a public hearing discussion considering the adoption of proposed amendment on the site sewer facility order for Hunt County, Texas, includes more stringent standards than the model order published by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. I'm opening this public hearing.
There's nobody on line to comment on that.
As anybody wants to talk about it in here. Then we go back in the regular session. I make a motion that we adopt the proposed amendment on site sewer facility for Hunt County, Texas, that includes more stringent standards than the model order published by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Number nine, discussion considering adoption of proposed amendment on site sewer order for Hunt County, Texas, that includes more stringent standards than the model order published by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Make a motion that we propose this or adopt it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. I believe that we got everything correct?
We did, yeah. And just for the public, if anybody's watching this interested in that, those aren't automatically effective. Those are going to be now sent back to the TCEQ for final approval. We expect to get that within a month. Then that'll come back and be posted on the website. And information on those should start in early 2023.
Do we have any other discussion on anything? I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion passes. We are closed up on this session. Is it off?
No.
I'm hitting it, but it's not wanting to go.